The blanks in that in in that form, so.
Yeah.
Good to know.
About does has anybody like gone from directly from their professor how difficult it's gonna be cuz? In class, I'm in, I forgot the name of my professor. And he went over some examples and when I asked him how. If it was gonna be as difficult as this and he was like, yeah, and these are examples with like. Four or five pointers overlapping each other.
Yeah, we'll probably do some questions like that.
Nobody like asked their professors how difficult it's gonna be?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't asked, I haven't asked my professor now.
Uh, me neither.
Yeah, anybody have an answer? Not really. Yeah, but.
Nope.
Not as hard as that last question, that's for sure.
I heard someone say pointers.
Yeah, we will deal with, well, they're not really called pointers, but yeah, we'll deal with reference variables.
Uh, hello?
Hello.
Hello, hello.
Hi, uh, I just wanted to know for this question that you're showing on the screen right now.
Yeah.
What is the, what is the question?
Yeah, the prompt is just, does it compile? Does it compile?
Okay.
Assume this is the full source code, does it compile? Right, same with what the question is that we started. Okay, so let's go through it, let's see, does it compile? It's has a couple more elements to it now, so. Defining a class, great, we always wanna define a class, right? So define a class, instance variables, Boolean, Boolean can record equals false, that's totally fine. Um, so we don't have any visibility modifiers, like we don't have any private or public, but that's okay, you don't have to. Um, so Boolean can record equals false, void, someone saying something, or is it just feedback? It's just someone's mics on, okay. It is, okay. Um, so void play type is just a method that we're defining called play type, play tape. And so if you call that method, it just prints out tape playing, fine. Void, void as in like the function doesn't return anything. Record tape, system dot out dot print L N tape recording, semicolons, brackets, everything's fine in that first class. Defining a new class, class Tape Deck Test Drive. Public static void main strings. T dot can record equals true, T dot play tape, if T dot can record equals true, T dot record tape, everything would be perfect. If we just defined what T is, we're, we don't know what T is, right? T is, uh, uh, you know, we're gonna assume that they meant to say, um, tape. Tape, tape. Deck. T. Right? Or, I know, sorry, more than that, Tape Deck T equals new. Tape. Deck. Right? And so create an object named T that is a tape deck. And from there, you can call upon all these variables and methods and all that. Before you define the variable, it just doesn't exist, like, sorry, there's no space there, no, no space. Right, there's just no variable there, so you can't do that. Question?
Yeah, I was gonna say, so for Tape Deck Drive, so we have two different classes. Uh, and neither one is in in the other, but the reason that if we were to include Tape Deck T is equal to new Tape Deck, the reason that would work was because they're belonging to the same package, correct?
Uh, yeah, the same package and even more so than that, the the same file, they're in the exact same file, so they certainly have access to each other.
If they're in the same file, they do, are you sure?
Yeah, like if there's two classes.
Because they're in the same package.
If they're in the same file.
Uh huh.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So there you go. So no, the answer is, yes, or. Oh, no, will not. Okay. Section B, class DVD player, Boolean can record equals false, void record DVD. System dot out dot print L N DVD recording, semicolon, semicolon, bracket, bracket, looks good. Class DVD player test drive, bracket, bracket, right, is fine. And let's see if the other brackets keep up, yeah, okay. Public static void main strings DVD player D equals new DVD player. Which is fine, you see, we have no arguments into our, uh, call, but that's fine because there's no construct, uh, yeah, there's no constructor for a second, I thought it was called. Record DVD, um, there's no constructors, so you know, you don't have to put any arguments in, it's fine. Um, and by the way, if there's no constructor, uh, there technically still is a constructor, but, uh, it just doesn't do anything, so. By default, Java puts in a constructor, um, which is, which is just, it's just, um, it would be. Uh, DVD, uh, yeah, it would just be DVD, whoops. Uh, was, is there a modifier in front? I can't remember, it would just be DVD. Player. Bracket, bracket, code. By default, is there a modifier that's supposed to be in front here? I can't remember, is there supposed to be a public? In the front there? You know Caleb?
I mean.
For the constructor, I forget if there has to be one.
You don't, you don't, you don't have to, but, um, like, it's not necessary, it's just like any other method.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, sounds good, okay, I forgot if there had to be one or not, yeah. So just by, just saying that by default, even if you don't write a constructor, there is a constructor, so it it doesn't actually like. Just because we're calling the constructor here, doesn't mean that it it's not gonna run, this will compile still. Because again, Java by default, by default. Makes a, makes a constructor. So anyways, D dot can record equals true, D dot play DVD. That's fine, yep, we're assigning this variable in here to a Boolean value, which is fine, and we're calling play DVD, oh. Does D have play DVD? No, so you see, we're calling the method play DVD here, there is no method play DVD. There's only record DVD. So this will have an error. Cause there is no, there is no, um. Method called play DVD.
What about that first statement, Boolean car record equals false, or can record?
Can record. That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, it uses the default modifier, which means it's accessible, uh, it's accessible within the same package. So you can treat it as public in the same package.
Yeah. But was there a question about, was the question about like, is that a valid line of code otherwise?
Yeah, like it was just directly under the class, but I guess that's like, almost like stating an instance variable and a value.
It is an instant variable, yeah. You usually, usually you put private in the front of instance variables, but you don't have to. Right?
Um, yeah.
If you don't, that's fine.
Yeah, remember privates and public, uh, they're just access modifiers, uh, they're optional actually, but, um. Even though like, uh, we put privates in 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 instance variables as a best practice. Um, in Java, it's optional, so keep that in mind.
Okay, so, uh, right over there for the class DVD. Uh, there, I think it, yeah, so that constructor over there, so right before the main.
Oops.
Uh, that, that's a constructor just without parameters, that's pretty much.
It's a constructor without parameters and without any coding, it just doesn't do anything, but it exists, so when you call it here, when you call it here, it's not gonna throw an error.
Mm hmm, and I looked it up, um, the default constructor has no access modifier.
Okay, good to know, so there is no access modifiers here, or any kind of modifiers there, yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, it's as default as it gets.
Yeah.
So proper structure of a, of a, like, of a file, or sorry, of code would just have. Your, um, main under your constructor, right?
Uh, really pro- really proper, uh. Well, this is outside of the ma- the class, so this is, this, this class ends there, this is a new class, right? And yeah, your, your main, your main method has to be in a class, it has to be in a class, whatever class that is, right? Uh, it doesn't matter what class, so like usually in like our labs, it's in a completely different file too, in the same package, but a different file. Right, um, but it's in its own class, remember like we do like complex try class, there's like the complex try class?
Yeah, sorry, this is just a lot of review, so pretty much the constructor is just referring. Uh, this main code to this certain class.
Exactly, this is assigning, essentially, it's constructing a object of type DVD player named D. But there's no construction that needs to happen. But it still needs to hap- like, there's no, like, additional construction that needs to happen, you just need to. Run the constructor, just to make the object exist. Right, so there's no like parameters and a variable assignment happening in here, right, usually this is where you say like this. This dot, something, 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 equals something, 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 none of that has to happen, so we just don't even declare it. And Java by default makes a constructor that looks like, exactly like this. So, yeah, there's, there's that.
Uh, I just had like a quick question.
Yeah.
Like, hey? So that's Tape Deck T equals new, yeah, yeah, right, that isn't like a plus?
Uh, yes, Tape Deck T equals new, yeah, that's exactly.
Okay, alright, alright, thank you.
Yep, that's a T.
Hello. Yeah, that's a T, I know, my writing is not the best, I have to apologize. I was teaching someone this morning and I was like, oh, I have to say the thing, I was doing, like I was teaching math, I was like, I have to say the thing. I'm sorry, I'm not an artist, as I was drawing a circle, and every, every math teacher has said that, uh, and and I have no exception, so. That, yeah.
Boy, in the future, I'm gonna get myself a Surface Pro A two, do some weird drawings.
Do some drawings, sure, yes.
Yeah.
I have this handy, handy drawing tablet, so that's how I do my. Okay, everybody like the candle? Ambiance.
Candle spooky.
Romantic, yeah. Um, okay, let's continue with the code stuff, obviously, that's what we're here for. Um, so forty-two, let's see what the next one, code magnets, let, I, I mean, we can definitely do this one, but maybe this one is another, should we try this one again? Let's do, let's try it again, let's try one more, and then what's the next one?
Yeah, let's, let's see more pool puzzles, because there's gonna be questions about those.
Yeah.
Pool puzzles, uh, I guess it's asked a lot, but this one looks a bit simpler though, maybe.
We'll see.
Let's see what happens.
We'll see what happens, yeah. Okay, um, so, uh, there is the prompt, although we don't really, I don't really need the prompt. Um, so, okay, let's, let's just read it before I, I'll delete it after, your job is to take code snippets from the pool and place them into the blank lines of code. You may use the same snippet, you may use the same snippet more than once, we weren't allowed to before, right? Think we weren't allowed to, uh, more than once, and you won't need to use all the snippets, no, did I read the last prompt wrong? And I thought we, we weren't allowed to, but we were actually. Find the. Find it here, uh, you may not, okay, now here it did say you may not, okay, so you may, here it says you may use the same snippet more than once. And you won't need to use all the snippets, your goal is to make classes that will compile and run and produce the output listed. Some of the exercises and puzzles in this book might not, uh, more than one, might have more than one correct answer. Find another correct answer, it's give yourself a bonus, fine. Code, um, the code is this guy. Hey, I'll make that nice and big. Output. This guy. Okay, and our pool of code is. This guy right there. Okay, let's take a look, what's the output, hello, dot, 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 hello, dot, 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 hello, dot, 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 hello, dot, 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 ten, okay? Um, so, it's interesting, there's a ten at the end, so. First of all, we have text, obviously, with different lines, take a look here. This class is printing on new lines, hello, dot, dot, dot. So first of all, I can already tell this line of code has to run four times. Run four times. Great. So let's see what will call that to happen, right? So first of all, it is a void type, meaning it returns nothing, great, then here. Uh, void, okay, that's fine. It's gonna have to run four times, so we need a loop, there's our loop, we're gonna have to make this run four times, now. E two. Dot count, print E two dot count, okay, so print E two dot count, I think that's gonna be that line right there. Right, print E, so we're printing some sort of count. Um, and I think we just color code it a little bit nicely, so I think that'll be right, right there like that. Okay, so first of all, let's look at where E one and E two are defined, Echo E one equals new Echo, okay? So Echo is a class that exists, it must be this class, that just must be what it is, right? So, uh, I'm gonna use the word Echo here, E C H O, um, so I'm gonna use that. Which is fine, so now we have a class named Echo, because it it has to be that, this is the only place we can define a new class. Right? So E one is this class, great, and then we're calling the function E one dot hello. E one dot hello, okay? I'm gonna take a guess here and say that that is what, that's what this method is gonna be called, right? E one dot hello. Right, class Echo, that class has access to a method called hello, which prints hello. So this line of code will have to run four times now. This line of code will have to run four times, since this line of code has to run, essentially, that's the same line of code. Okay, great, a little bit of progress, I'm, I'm flirting about those two. Now we gotta take care of the numbers, right, so right now, if I left everything else, well, the while loop is something we have to consider too, okay, so X. Is starting out as zero, int X equals zero, so we're starting at a zero, this line has to run four times, so what that tells me. Is that this whole while loop, which I'm gonna put in, I'm gonna highlight the brackets here. To emphasize where the while loop starts and ends, right, notice that after the while loop is done, that's when we print our new guy there, right? How many times does that have to run? One, two, three, four, so X is less than four, because it's zero, one, two, three. So X has to be less than four, and luckily, that's one of our options, so X is less than four. Use that one. Right, zero, one, two, three, X value of zero, one, two, three, that'll run four times in total. Great, so now, um, if I left everything else blank, you know, minus a bunch of syntax errors. Um, it should work, right, because we're incrementing and it should, it should give me that, but it won't give me the right count, so now we gotta deal with the count. First of all, I need to declare E two as an object, see, E two here, we're calling E two dot count. And if you look here, Echo classes have a, have a instance variable, and I'm going to take a guess here. That this is the word count. Because we're calling upon the count of an Echo variable, an Echo. Type object, and so we have that here, we have to declare that Echo type objects have a count. Variable. Right? So, okay, great, we have that now. And, but first, but, but then after this, E two doesn't exist anywhere yet, it's called upon, but I never declared it. So I have to declare Echo. Uh, E two, I mean, sorry, E two, so it's Echo E two. Equals new. Echo. New Echo, that's it. Right? It's E two there. Echo E two equals new Echo. So I'm gonna use that line of code. Right? Now, E one and E two both exist, and they both have a method called hello and a count variable. Great. So now what do I want it? I wanna take care of this thing, so right at the end, E two dot count, I want this, well, I want my E two dot count to be equal to ten, right, that's what I want. Right now, it's equal to zero. Right, and it stays equal to zero. So let's see what has to happen after this. Um. E two plus equal is some of those two, increment that. Um, let's see what other lines of codes we have here, E one dot count. Is equal to count plus, so what lines of code can't work, well. That won't, that won't do anything, that line of code is useless, that line of code is also useless. Because it's assigning of a reference variable to an int. Doesn't make sense. This is, you can't add one to an object, so that, that doesn't work either. This is, this is wrong, because you'd never call it, but thi- this one's fine, this one's, this one's okay. So E one dot count is integer, is equal to E one dot count integer plus one, that's essentially this line of code, but with E one instead. Right? Um, and. So those lines of code don't help us at all, the word tester, Echo, so, so Echo is not a method, so we can't do that. Count is also not a method, so we can't do that. Um, E one equals E two is a valid line of code, that's fine. Um, then we have Echo E two equals E one. Um. That might be interesting. What that would do is it would, and I could use this line of code instead of this line of code. And what that would do is it would make Echo, it would make E two and E one both point to the same memory. And so they're count variables, so if, if I ran this line of code. If I ran this line of code here instead of that, that would make E two dot count. Equal to E one dot count. Because E two and E one are just referencing the same section of code. Right? So what that essentially, what, what these two lines would do, if that pink one was there, be clear, let me, let me just write it, so. So if I ran this. Echo E one equals new. Echo. And then Echo. E two equals E one. What this would do is it would. It would create, the first line of code would create our reference variable E one. And then in the memory, we would have our count. Count and our hello method. And then E two would be created, so let me just be clear here, E one points to that block, right? E two would be created, and it would also point to that block, so when I say, so, that's right, that's supposed to be E two. So when I say E two dot count, that's this, when I say E one dot count, that's also this. Right?
Um, Adam.
Yes.
Isn't that not going to work though, because we have, uh, hello being run four times, which means that the while loop's only being executed a total of four times?
That's true.
Like I think, it, so, and then if we're adding, um, I'm assuming like, based off the code, isn't that gonna end up with a total value of eight instead of ten?
Um, if I, what, if I. If I do what after this, cuz I'm not on that part, yeah, like, like.
Nevermind, yeah, never.
Yeah, I'll be on that in a second, I'll be on that in a second, I'm just right, going through this, yeah. Um, so if I have here E two dot count. And E one dot count would point to the same thing there, also, E one dot hello and E two dot hello would be the same method, but that's, that's obvious already, that they would be the same, they would run the same code. But the interesting thing is that this is the same variable now, the same number. Okay. So now that I have that, I'm, I'm actually pretty sure that that is how we're supposed to go ahead and do this. Um, and so this would be Echo. E two equals E one. Notice, I didn't use the new. Keyword. What that means is that now I didn't create a new memory block, I used the old memory block. Right? No need to make two memory blocks. Okay, so now that I have this, we're gonna go, we have two objects like this, we're gonna go in the loop, X is less than four, yep, X is zero, call the function, great. Do something, I don't know what that something is, just. Yeah, I don't know what that is. If, so I think it's a little, a little bit nicer to write this line of code as, as, you know what, I'll just say. E two. Dot count plus plus. Right? Count plus plus, uh, you know, that's a, it would be nicer if I wrote it nicely, I didn't, so. Uh, I'll just say, I'll just say this is the increment. Increment what? Increment our out variable, there's pretty much only one count variable, right, that one right there. So, um, at the end of the loop, we increment again, so the loop is gonna run three times, which is exactly what we want, in three go-arounds. We want to gain ten points, no, ten points, ten points, yes. Right, so.
Wait, why is it three go-arounds?
Uh, because X equals zero, X equals one, X equals two, X equals three. I meant four, that's what I said, that's what I meant. Um, yeah, four go-arounds, right, cuz we have four lines of code, and then, and then the execution of the number. So in four repeats of the loop, of the while loop, yeah?
Was it for it to run, soon to be like, X less than five and plus four?
Um, if it was X less than five, then this would run for, this would run five times, because look, we start X equals zero, remember? X equals zero, then, then increment, X equals, then it, then it's one, right? So X equals zero, it goes through, that, that's one, let me count up here, so. So when X equals zero, X equals one, X equals two, X equals three, but not when X equals four. So it goes four times in total. If we start here, if it was X equals five, then it would be X equals zero, X equals one, X equals two, X equals three, X equals four. If this was a five here. And it would run five times, which means that we would have five hellos. But that won't work. Do you know what I'm saying? If, if that's confusing, I can explain it a different way too. Does that make sense as a answer for that? Sounds, I think that is yes. So now that we know, it's actually, uh, we know this section, again, in the four go-arounds here. Around this while loop, I need to increment my count variable by ten, okay, by ten points. So let's take a look at how I'm gonna do that, I have a feeling, this line of code, just a, just a feeling. That this line of code is gonna be E one count equals E one count plus one. Because we need to do some incrementation, and these don't suffice, so I'm, I have a feeling. That that line of code, this, this one right here, has to go, has to go there. Okay, now that I know that. Now that I have this, um, I know that if I just let this code go, it'll be zero. One, two, so how many times it's gonna go, it's gonna go four, four times, so it's gonna be, count is gonna be equal to four, right? Um. Uh. Does this screw things up, this line here? Does this screw things up? Can you say count equals count plus count? Like if I, can I say that?
Yeah, you can do X is equal to X plus one, right?
Yeah, you can do that, but can you say X is equal to X plus X?
Yeah. It's just X is equal to X.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that'll throw some sort of error.
I don't think so.
Yeah. Yeah, I doubt, like, it's like, you evaluate the right side first and assign the left.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Then, so you get everything on the right side first, and then assign it to the left, so think of it that way.
Yeah, makes sense, okay, so essentially, this line of code doubles our count. Right, doubles our count, we wanna do that when we have five as our count, right? That's, that's what we want at that point, so essentially, this is gonna be, you know, count, count equals, equals, equals five, but we, we don't have that as an option here sadly. Um, so we're gonna have to do with Xs, right? Um, but I think that's actually pretty good, so it's gonna go one, two, three, four, okay, four. Yeah, 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 okay. Okay, this, I, and I'm allowed to use them multiple times, okay, so I think I can just say X equals, equals three, X equals, equals three. I think that works, I think that's actually the answer. So let me show you how I th- thought of that, right? So essentially, X equals zero, let me, let me look at all the, all the goes here, so. X equals zero, we go through the code, our count begins, so this is gonna be the count. And this is gonna be X, X is equal to zero, by the end of it. Let me do it like this, X is equal to zero, by the end of it, it's equal to one. Count is equal to zero, by the end of it, it's equal to one. Let me actually, let me, let me do this properly on the side. One knows being. Difficult today. Say that every single stream. Still, that's, that's thing. Not that I have anything using one, okay, so I am having trouble. Popping this. Okay, so just fit that a little bit nicer, sometimes it's nice that it snaps to a grid, just sometimes it's nice, not always. Okay, so these are our loops, I'm gonna just describe it with loops here, right? So when. When. X is equal to zero, by the end of the loop, X is equal to one, count is equal to zero, count is now equal to one, great, on the, the beginning of the next loop. X, and I'll say count, so there start out as one, cuz it comes from the last one, X is now equal to two, because we're incrementing. See, um, count is now equal to, um, is now equal to two, it just keeps going up like that, right, because we're just incrementing here. These lines are not running. So now, we start our next one with two and two again, right, this is count, and this is X. By the end, count is equal to three, sorry, X is equal to three and count is equal to three, nothing different is happening here, okay, but now. We have some interesting thing happening, right? So count is equal to, um, three to begin with, and X is equal to three, by the end, X is equal to four, no question about that, right? And so it won't run again, which is great, we wanna run one, two, three, four times. Now let's look at what happens to count, it starts out as equal to three, here, now it's equal to four. Okay, so I'll say here, it is now equal to four. Um, then at this line of code, if X is equal to three, yep, count is now equal to five. Right, count is equal to five, just do this here, okay, next line of code. If X is equal to three, it is double X, this is like, count is equal to count plus count. Count is equal. Count is equal to five plus five. So now we have 10. And that's exactly what we want. Then afterwards, right here, next line, it just prints that count variable. And we get our.
Yep, so, uh, if I run this on red plate, uh, you can actually see it here.
Let's take a look. Yes, hello, 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 and then, perfect. Great, so I'm happy to see it worked. Very nice, thank you for that, Caleb.
No worries.
Um, any questions about that?
Wait, if you don't mind, can you re-explain like why you think it was three for both?
Three for both, yeah, because I know that on this run, I, what I said is, what, what I, what I noticed is that on this run. I want my, it starts out as three, right? It, the, the count value starts out as three, on this run, count value starts out at three. Why is that? Because for the first few runs, they just both increment because of this line. So that line right there, that line and that line, they both increment. So the first few runs is just like that. But this is, this line of code here, this, this line like right there is like a double, it's essentially doubling it, right? X is equal to two x, count is equal to count plus count. So I know that I wanna double it when I have five, when I have, like, when I have a fi- count value of five. I can get a count value of five in the middle of this fourth run, because count starts out as three. It's going to increment right away, so it's gonna be four. Then this line of code is just an increment, so I wanna increment now, and this line of code is a double. So it's gonna be three, increment, increment, double. Three, four, uh, three, four, five, 10. And I want these lines of code, the extra increment and the double, to only happen on the third, when x is equal to three, so the fourth run. The fourth run through there. So yeah, there's that. That's essentially it. Complicated questions, complicated questions. Really gotta try these out. But. Yeah, any questions? Sounds good.
Yep.
Otherwise, I will continue. So we have. Now, we just finished forty, uh, twenty, oh no, I was just, I went back. So we just finished forty-five, this one, okay, and so we're done that. Let's move on to page fifty-two. This one's fifty-two, okay, interesting, fifty-two, uh, and sixty-three and sixty-six, wow, let me just, let me just see. Sixty-three, okay, sixty-three looks good. Sixty-three, two, sixty-six, let me ask that one, another pool puzzle one. And then sixty-six is. Yes, let's start with the, let's start with the compile one, just so we're familiar.
Yeah.
Compilation and then.
Yep. So this chapter is about arrays. Uh, it's good to know this stuff because we use them a lot, especially in COE four two eights, when you get started in the, um, algorithms and data structures. These pop up a lot, so make sure you know these stuff.
Okay, let's take a look. So. Code, again, the prompt is just, this is a full set of code, does it run, does it compile? If it does, great, if it doesn't, you know.
Except.
Yeah. Exactly, if you can fix it easily. So. Let's take a look, class, books, string title, string author. That's fine, class, books, there's a class called books. It, um, has an instance variable called title and it has an instance variable called author. Um, they're both strings, nothing, nothing funny with that, that's, that's totally fine. No constructor, so you can't assign those until you're out, but that's fine. Till you're another class. Another class now, class, books, test drive, oh, by the way, brackets, 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 good, okay. Public static void main strings, we're in a, we're in our main, main. Main function, main, uh, method. Books, so an array of books, this is saying, an array of books, things called books, what are books? This is what a book is. Right, so an array of books called my books, right? Is new, this new keyword is saying, create the memory, allocate the memory for an array of four, uh, four books. Just in index of three, am I right about that? I might be right about that. Is there four, four books or is it?
Three.
It's a.
It's three?
It's three.
It's three, okay, so it's index zero, one, two. Is that right? That's it, that's right, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, so we have three books here, um, again, to access the first book, it's, it's my books zero, right? How arrays work.
Yep, actually, uh, here's a question, uh, interesting. So what would be the default values of each element in my books, uh, when you declare the books array?
Yeah.
Anyone, anybody?
Let's hear, anybody have the answer, yes, no, no.
It's no. So, so, uh, what happens if you're trying to set the title property of null?
Nothing, null doesn't have a title property, right? So.
Null has no title properties, so, uh, so do you think this code would compile?
Yeah, let's hear.
Yeah. Yeah. So where does the error start?
So the errors would start here, right? So our next line of code, int x equals zero is, is fine, which is declaring a variable, x equals zero. But then here we're trying to say, the book that is stored in the list my books, in the zeroth position. Its title should be The Grapes of Java. But that book doesn't exist yet, because we never declared my books, my books. Zero, um. E, uh, uh, dot, no, what do I do?
My books. My books index zero equals null at the time.
So equals new books? Do I say that? That's right, yeah.
Yeah, you should initialize, uh, these books first.
Yeah, so there should be a line, there should be three lines of this, one for zero, one for one, one for two, and that would initialize it, that should go right here, right? Three of them, let's say, three times, right? And then there you can start editing the title and the author, but before that, you, the books just don't exist, we have an array that exists, an array has been initialized here. Right? But the books have not then been initialized themselves or constructed themselves.
So I remember when we did an example where we had a constructor with no parameters. But isn't that kinda like the same case where we have one with no parameters, so it's okay if we don't initialize?
Um, it, it's okay if you don't make the constructor, but you have to initialize the object always. Well, not.
Oh, so that in that last example?
Yeah.
Okay, so in our last exa- that last example where it's, uh, where we didn't, where we had a construction, constructor, but we didn't make it ourselves. Um, they already were initialized, right? It's just cause I can't remember.
Uh, yeah, let's take a look, let's take a look, yeah. So here, um, uh, no, no, it was, uh, here, right? So this, there is the initialization process happening, right? That's the initialization, we're assigning D is a new DVD player and right there, we're calling the constructor. And you have to call the constructor for the object to exist. You have to call the constructor for D to exist as a DVD player. But here, we're calling, not really the constructor, kind of a constructor, but it's not really a constructor, it's essentially just allocating memory for three books. An array of three books, it's allocating memory. This is the constructor for books. That's the constructor. And that doesn't exist up here, but that's fine, because Java automatically makes a constructor if it doesn't exist. That's just that, right? That's automatically there, so we have to call the constructor for the object to exist. So at this point, the objects, the, without this line of code, the, the objects, my book, my books zero, my books one, my books two, simply don't exist. The memory is allocated for them. The memory is allocated for them, but the objects don't exist until you call the constructor. Does that make sense?
Even if we did that.
Yeah, we did.
Question, not bad, even if we did that, would, wouldn't it still not work because of there are no methods for title and author? Or is this assuming that they've already made the methods somewhere else?
There is no method, you're right, but this is not calling a method, this is calling a variable. This is accessing a variable. If there was title brackets after, that means you're accessing a method, but this is just the variable, title, author. Which is fine, we declared those as part of the instance variables. Right? We declared those. Okay. Good to keep going, so, so this is a no. No in this section. Okay, um. Next, we have class hobbits, uh, string name, so the hobbits have a name, public static main, yeah, continue.
Cause, uh, nothing, I was just saying haha.
Oh, okay, haha to hobbits, okay, yes, sure. Um, so string name, public static void main strings, uh, is our main, and so let's just take a look at the brackets workout. You know, I don't wanna say yes, this works and the brackets don't work, so I'm gonna assume that those brackets go together, then I'm gonna assume that, but I, you know, of course, they're not gonna throw us a bracket question. But the while loop goes like that, if, if, good, we're. So now that I know this, um, let's take a look what's happening. Hobbits array H, what this is saying is that I'm going to, what this whole line of code is saying, I like translating lines of code into like plain English, this line of code here is saying. Let's see what this line of code's saying, give me one second to get my cursor, okay, it's saying. Declare an array named, named H, which has enough space for three hobbit. Objects. That's what that line of code is saying. Declare an array named H, which has enough space for three hobbit objects. Okay? Now I know that, int z equals zero, okay, it's fine, z is less than four, z is incremented, totally fine, no, no issues there. H of z, so the, the zed, zed thing, the, uh, the, that's, that's, it's difficult with the word zed, usually it's i, so it's ieth, but the. Zed H object, so the, the index of z, I should say that, the index of z in the array H is being initialized, perfect, that's what we want. We want them to be hobbit, th- this does not actually create hobbit objects, right? I wanna note here, this does not, does not create hobbits. Right, it does not create any hobbit objects, this line of code creates. The objects. Right? That's what that line of code does. So it has to run that, but notice, we are not initializing H of zero, H of zero does not get initialized, because it skips right to H of one. At the, the first index. And H of zero is one and it's not, has not been initialized. So if we try to access H of zero, that will do a compiler, but that's okay, the other, like, if, as long as we don't try to access H of zero as a hobbit, that's fine. So we assign it, uh, z is, so as z is equal to one right now, so the first index of H is a new hobbit, creates an object with a name Bilbo and then F. If F, if z, sorry, is equal to one, which is true, set the name to Frodo. If z is equal to two, set the name to Sam. Otherwise, and then, then just keep going, uh, print out the name is a good hobbit name, right? Which is fine, nothing, there's nothing wrong. So nothing wrong there, okay, so then that, that's fine, I think it'll compile, nothing, well, let's, let's check one thing quickly, so. It'll compile, it'll loop again, it'll say z is equal to two now, right? So H of two is fine, H of two is fine, oh, hold on. Yeah, agent, we will have an issue.
There is one issue.
There is an issue, right? Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I just noticed it now. Um. So H of two is Bilbo, z is equal to two, so make the name Sam, and that's fine, so z is equal to two, goes through now. It's gonna loop again, right? Because z is two, so it's less than four, z is now equal to three, and it's going to try to access H of three. It's going to try to access H of three as a new hobbit. The issue is, is that H is an array which contains H of zero. H of one. H of two, we only have enough space for three hobbits, right? So H of three does not exist, and you have an out of bounds error, whatever it's called.
A classic index out of range error.
Out of range error, there you go, yeah, right? Um, and so there is our error with z equal to three, but interesting to note what's happening here. The, what's gonna happen is that this hobbit's gonna be created, this hobbit's gonna be created, and then error, right? That's what's gonna happen. Okay. There we go. That's that.
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, to fix that, uh, we can just simply put z equals to z plus one, uh, maybe at the bottom of the while loop.
Yeah.
And, uh, one thing you need to change as well is change z is, z is less than four to z is less than three, because we only have three hobbits, not four.
Yep. That would fix it. So you, first of all, you wanna initialize the zero with one, so you shouldn't in- increment immediately, you wanna initialize the zero with hobbit. And then you don't wanna loop so many times, you don't wanna loop four times, you wanna loop, um, you wanna loop three times. So for zero, one and two. That's exactly what this condition does right there, whoops. All right, one note's being weird and I'm not used to it.
One note to be like.
Yes, one note is always annoying, well, not always, but, but, uh. Sometimes, recently, yes. Okay, any questions about this set of code there? Try another one of these, I think that's actually, these are actually pretty good practice, these pool puzzle things.
Balls, they are the best way to test, uh, the actual skill and prepare us, so.
I think they're genuinely are pretty good practice, um, I think that's pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
Stuff, but, um, continuing on, I should check my phone quickly. So maybe just take a one second break. Okay, so let's continue on. Have a little bit of my water, okay, so is it dark in the camera? Yeah, it's a little dark, it's dark in this room for some reason today, I don't really know why. We have the power going out a bunch of times, oh, this lamp is kind of dim, that's what's the problem, I have a lamp in front of me, you can't see it obviously, but I, I have a lamp that is usually bright, but it's not bright today. Anyways, so. Let's try the pool puzzle one, let's just take a look here quickly, your job is to take code snippets, da-da-da, you may use the same snippet more than once and you won't need to use all snippets, your goal is to make a class that will compile, so. We may use the snippet more than once. Um, so there is that, there is that, and there is that. These are good questions. So let's take a look now at our, uh, code. Output. Cool.
You should, you should notice that's like the output is incomplete, we're gonna have to fill that out ourselves, but, uh.
Interesting.
Like, look for a pattern in, uh, in the out, in the other outputs and, uh, fill in the code first.
Yeah. Okay, so let's take a look here, we have. An output of triangle zero, area one, uh, area four point, triangle one, area ten, triangle two, area eighteen, triangle three, area something, y equals something. Okay. So we gotta figure out, first of all, what that output is, yeah, and then, but based on this, these first few lines, so we gotta make these first few lines work, right? And then, but we know it has, this, this section has to run four times, and we'll see from there, okay. Let's take a look at what we got working with, we have a class triangle, double, uh, we have a, a double variable, co- double variable called area, which is an instance variable of the class. Totally good. Int height, int length, great, so I guess, uh, uh, that, uh, I, I take it they mean, they mean base. In, in usual terms, you say base times height divided by two, but I think that's probably what they mean. Um, we're opening, sometimes we don't use a separate test class because we're trying to save space on the page, that's. So public static void main strings is opening our, um, main method. Now, if we take a look here, um, this is some instance variable, or not instance variable, but some variable we're declaring, something, while, something, something, okay? Something dot height equals x plus one times two. Interesting, I don't know why you'd need that, but we'll, we'll figure that out soon. Um. X plus one times two, yeah, so two x plus two, uh, whatever, so some line, um. Something dot length equals x plus four, some line of code, print triangle. Number, oh, okay, so triangle x represents the number of the triangle we're talking about, right? Area, and then we're gonna print equals area, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Area, and then we're gonna print equals area, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a guess here. This is the number. Um, so we need an array, can tell we already, already tell we need an array. Yeah, okay, we're gonna need an array of triangles, and the index will be x, okay? Yep, um, some line of code, that's the while loop, so this whole section of code is going to make this thing happen. Right, that's that. This. This, and this, is gonna make that happen. Okay. So, apart from this, this is just gonna be for the y section, notice that we have a, we have. Oh, I see how we're gonna do it. Um, so, notice that we have ta of two. Meaning we have an array called ta, and it has an index of two, and it has an area. So notice that the objects that are contained within the array ta have an instance variable called area. So the objects inside of the array ta must be triangles. So somewhere up here, we have to declare an array called ta, right? Um, which takes in triangles, so definitely our line of code will have to be triangle. Um, uh, array. Ta equals new. Um, triangle. And how many triangles do we want? We want four triangles. So that is that line of code. Okay, so we have an array called ta, which has enough space for four triangles. Okay. I'm gonna have to set a variable x here, right, I don't have a, I don't know what my x is, I'm definitely gonna have to say int x equals something. Okay, why do I need an x? Because x is immediately used here without being declared, so I need to declare it. And I have a feeling that x is going to be the thing that's indexing the while loop as well. So, I don't know what I'm gonna start with, but it's gonna be x something. X is less than, I should think it's x is less than five, yeah, how do I know? Because this has to loop four times, so, zero, one, two, three. Zero, one, two, three, four, five. So that means int x equals zero is our starting thing here, now, there's probably a few other ways you could do this, you could probably start at, no, you couldn't start.
Wait, hang on, I thought it's gonna be x is less than four, because, uh, we only want zero, one, two, and three.
Oh, you're right, there's four in total, yeah, you're right, you're, there's four in total, zero, one, two, three, yes, I don't know why I was counting five, that, that makes sense. Okay, so then we need, yeah, the reason I was counting five is because it just confuses me that, that is not an index, that is a number, that is a count. Of elements in the array, so I think, oh, I see triangle four, that means we have three elements. Right, but, but no, that's not, that's not true, or no, we have five elements, sorry, I see this and I say we have five, we have five elements, because the max one is an index of four, but. Anyways, that's me confusing myself, we have four triangles, we want this to run four times. One for x equals zero, one for x equals one, two, and then three, four times the total. Fantastic. We have to immediately here, look, we're accessing an object, right, we're accessing variables inside an object. Somewhere, we gotta start declaring these, these objects, right, we gotta start constructing them. So, I'm quite certain this line is going to be ta of x is equal to new triangle. Okay, and I think that there must be a line here somewhere, ta of x is equal to new triangle, yeah, what this is doing is it's setting it so that the. Xth, the index of x element in the ta array, is being constructed to become a new triangle. Immediately, I think we just say, uh, ta of x. Ta of x, I don't see why not, that's fine, ta of x, ta of x, uh, which must be here somewhere, yeah. There, oh, I also use that, and I also use int x equals zero there. Right, so we're setting the height and length, the triangles, okay, that's all for now, that's fine. Then, uh, we want triangle something area, so let's see if this would work right away. Triangle zero has an area of zero plus one times two, one times two is four. Ah, that's height though, so, length is here, oh, look, we don't have an area yet, actually, we've never declared what area is, that's our issue. So you see, we never, so this is gonna be t, ta of x, because we want to find the area of the xth triangle, right? Triangle x has an area of ta of x dot area. Let me say that again, that might be a little confusing, triangle x has an area of ta of x dot area. This is accessing the area of the triangle which is held in the array ta at position x. Right, again, anybody stop? Because I know a lot of, a lot of words. So. Now that we have that there, I know I need to assign area at some point, I need to say ta of x dot area, okay, but equals, equals what exactly, right? Well, I mean, so area is equal to. Base, like length times height divided by two, is that what they want us to do here, let's see what our options are. So, um, uh, uh, we don't have a, we can't, okay, so, let me just cross out a couple that will never work, so that will never work. Uh, that.
I think area is defined in the last line.
You think that, sorry, what?
I think area is defined in the last line. The very last line.
The very last line, oh, oh, void set area. This here, yes, you're right, I didn't even see that, yeah, oh, I see, okay, so never mind, this, this actually will work.
I think you also have to declare y, because I don't think y is declared in any, anywhere.
Uh, declare the variable y, yeah, you're right, that probably, that probably goes right here. Yeah. Okay, so, now that I, I realize that we have a set area, um, I take. Um, oh, I see how it is, okay, so, oh, no, do I say it is, wait, void dot set area, oh, no, you call it upon itself, so you can just say. Can you just say area equals height times length divided by two, I think you can just say that, you don't have to say this dot area.
That's okay.
That's fine, yeah, yeah, so here, we're gonna set the area equal to height times length divided by two, which is the area of, the, the formula for the area of a triangle. Right, so I'm gonna use that here, so now when I call the method set area, it's going to take the height times the length and, and divide it by two. So, that's actually what I want to do right here. I want to call the method to set the area, I want to say ta dot x, uh, not ta dot x, sorry, ta. Of x. Dot, set, area. The exact line of code that I crossed out a second ago, because I thought it couldn't exist, right, we're gonna use that. Because that's gonna set the area based on the height and the length we were just given. We don't have to pass in the height and the length as parameters, which is probably what some people are thinking. Because what, because these variables, height and length, are already defined as an instance variable in the class. So remember, this main method is just another method in the class, it doesn't matter, then this method comes after, still fine, right? And so the, it had, it already has access to the variables area, height, and length, because it was declared in the class right there, as an instance variable. Okay, any questions about that? Sounds like we're good, I should have the three out. Um, so now that we have that, we know the area here, I'm getting the area, this should work, this will function. And then at the end, I probably want to do x, uh, equals x plus one, because I want to go to the next triangle, right? So I'm quite certain this will work, uh, if, if x is equal to one now, uh, the height is going to be one. Uh, no, sorry, did the area work, sorry, I didn't even check if the area worked. So zero is going to be. Yeah. I'm confused here, zero, zero, is, this is going to get us two for our height, and four for our length, two times four is eight, divided by two is four, yes, okay, area is good. If that wasn't good, then it'd be weird. Um, so x equals x plus one, fantastic, that's, that's gonna increment our while loop, and as long as x is less than four, we will be good, so we'll have all our areas there. Um, I can pretty much fill in this spot here now, right, so I know this area, because it's gonna be when x is equal to three, right, it's gonna be when x is equal to three, so. X is equal to three, this is gonna give us, um, eight, and this is gonna give us seven, eight times seven, whatever. Base times height divided by two is gonna give me area equals twenty-one. No, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Yes. I, I, I got it right before you there.
And, don't, yeah, and don't forget the dot zero, because it's a double.
Yeah. Thanks. Um, so. There we go, I know that, essentially, that whole section's done now. I now just gotta focus on this y equals part, what's going on in this y equals part? Um, did I show everything I used ta? Uh, yeah, okay, first of all, we have a, it's like someone just mentioned just, just a little bit ago, we have a variable y here. Which is being used as a variable and is never declared, so I need to declare it, I think I can just say. I think I have to declare it as something, int y, I might have to say int y equals x. Uh, I think I do have to say that, yeah.
That's the only choice that has an initialized value.
Yeah, ex, well, if I just said int y, it would be zero, so that should be, that would be fine, too, right?
Uh, no, that's not true.
That's not true?
No, it wouldn't have a value at all, if you tried to run it, it'd give you a runtime error, because it wouldn't know what the value of y is.
I thought it, but I thought it initialized to zero.
It doesn't, i- i- it says like there's, uh, there's no way to tell what the value of y is, it doesn't initialize to zero, i- it, logically, it should, but it doesn't.
Uh, hang on, hang on, hang on, wait, uh, I thought Adam said like initial, initial, initializing y equals zero.
Uh, no, no, initializing y equals zero is, is fine, that would, like, that would work.
Yeah, oh, yeah, uh, then in that case, since we're initializing y as a local variable, um, you, it, you need to give it a value before using it.
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't give a default value of zero, that's what Adam was thinking.
I thought it did a default value of zero, I thought that was something.
It doesn't, it doesn't work like that.
Confused on something, but.
It's a local variable, uh.
Oh, in, in, instance variables, height is, is, is zero, right, to begin with? Height and length are initialized to zero?
Though, like, uh, those are instance variables, but y is a local variable, so.
I know, but what I'm just asking is, is height and length, are they initialized to zero?
Yes.
Are you sure?
I'm pretty sure instance variables are.
Yeah, 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 they, uh, any number instance variables are initialized to zeros.
Okay, I knew something was initialized to zero, I knew something was initialized to zero, yeah, so local variables, I guess, are not.
Yeah, local variables, you have to give it a value, otherwise it's not gonna work out.
And a local variable is a variable that's defined within a method, not as an instance variable, so as in, as in this line of code, right?
Yep, so, the only choice that is valid in order to like print y directly is, uh, just get y to be equal to x.
Yeah, any more questions about that, someone, think someone was just about to ask a question? No?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. So, int y is equal to x is again, yeah, is the only value here that would get us anything that makes sense, otherwise, it would just, it would just not work, I mean, you can only say int y, or int y equals x. Int y doesn't work, because again, like we were just saying, local variables are not initialized to zero, they're just not initialized at all. So int y equals x, initialize it to x. What will that be when we first come out of here? Well, it will be, um, four. Four? Four, it'll be four. Um, so we're gonna have y, y is equal to four, essentially, that's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna have here. Um, y is equal to four, x is equal to twenty-seven, triangle t five equals ta of two. So we are defining a new triangle called t five, which is equal to ta of two, which is that triangle. That is ta of two, right? Ta of two dot area is that, don't set the height and everything, just, just set the area directly, that's totally fine, though. System dot out dot print y equals, equals plus y, so, I suppose that will be four. Just write that here, suppose that will be, y equals four. Oh, but then we have more, then we have more to it.
Yeah, there's more though, yep.
And then we are printing comma, t. Five, area, equals, and now we're gonna add on t five dot area, and that's, oh, okay, now we gotta think about this a little bit harder, okay, so. Triangle t five is being assigned to ta of two. What's happening here is that, we have, uh, let me, let me draw it over here, so we have our, um, ta of zero. Ta of one. Ta of two. Ta of three, right, it goes up to three, yeah, and then we have ta five. These are all variables which reference a block of memory designated for a triangle. Okay?
Yep.
Including t five, but immediately, t five is declared as the same reference as ta of two.
And also, uh, Adam, uh, Adam, I think you meant to write t five, not ta five.
Uh, yeah, I did mean to say t five, but ta, here, I just thought the variable was ta. Here, there we go, t five, this, this t five.
Yep.
Immediately, t five is referencing ta of two. The ta of two and t five now reference the same bit of memory, so when I do the next line of code here. Ta of two dot area is four thirty-four, or three forty-three, can't read numbers. T five dot area is also three forty-three, because they reference the same block. So I get area equals three, whoops. Equals three forty-three. And there you go, that's it, that's all, everything. There we go. That's the question. I thought there was more, but that's, there's our top ten.
And also three forty-three dot zero, because area is still a double.
Is a dub, yeah. I don't know if they would take marks off for that.
Maybe or maybe not, but, uh, it's good practice to know, to know this, because, uh, because the dot zeros distinguish a double from an int.
That's true. Yeah. It's just a little bit of form, but yeah.
Yep.
Okay, any questions for this?
Wait, they're not gonna give a pool of options, eh?
Uh, I don't, don't think so, but I think they'll give you lots of questions, can be little parts of this solution. Little part, like lots of questions they could give, is like a little part of everything we just discussed in this question, that's why I think there, these are worth the time to do.
Yeah, and also, just to let you know, I doubt they would give you like the, uh, the choices with the size of a swimming pool.
Yeah, if they gave you anything like this, it wouldn't, yeah, and, and they would not, yeah, that's fun. Um, but, okay, continuing on, there we have that, let's see, um. Uh, honestly, I kinda wanna move on to more later stuff, so let's look at page eighty-seven.
Yep.
Wait, can we try to pass midterm later?
Pass midterm, sure, yeah, I can't imagine those questions will be totally the same, but yeah. Um, the compiler stuff, I like the compiler stuff, and then ninety-one.
And if they compile, uh, let's also see what's the output is, I think that's meant to be part of the exercise.
Okay, yeah, is it? I'm just not reading it.
Yeah, if, if, if you look at the, uh, beta compiler, uh, just read the whole thing.
Yeah, they will, yeah, it does ask it.
Yeah. Yeah, let's practice that as well, because, uh, what would be their output questions is gonna be like, uh, a question on the midterm.
Sure, yeah, that's a good idea, okay.
Yeah.
So, let's take a look at this first one, class X copy, fine, declaring a class, public static void main strings, totally fine. Int orig, origin, whatever, equals forty-two. X copy x is equal to new X copy, declaring a reference variable to a, something of class X copy. Allocating space for that using the constructor, the new variable and, the new keyword and using the constructor, totally fine. Int y equals, okay. X dot go orig. Uh, that's fine, yeah, nevermind, we have a thing here. Is that fine, yeah, that is fine, um, system dot out dot print ln, orig plus space plus y. So, we're looking at, well, what's x dot go orig, right? Um, and so we look into the actual method called go. Um, and so we look into the actual method called go, and it takes in an int, which is fine because we're putting in an int. Arg equals arg times two. That's fine. Um, so times two, so it's going to multiply by two and return. So this will compile. Will it compile? What's that bracket doing? Oh, nevermind, that's, that's that bracket for that bracket, okay. Um, so. That bracket, 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 yeah, okay. It will compile and it will return orig, no. It will return. Forty-two. Eighty-four? Is that right? Someone confirm?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, just know that, uh, if you pass in, uh, integer arguments, uh, basically you're passing by value. Which means you are passing a copy of the number. Uh, you, you're passing in a copy of, uh, the value. So, uh, if you change like arg, uh, inside the, uh, method, it's not gonna change the. Uh, it's not gonna change the variable you pass into. It's very hard to explain, but, um. Arg is basically not a pointer, so, um. So the changes to, uh, the arg is gonna be local in the, uh, local to the, uh, go method itself.
Yeah.
I would say that.
Yeah, so what he's saying essentially is just that, um, that when we're passing in this variable, orig, right? When I say here, so that, this variable that I'm passing in, and this variable, they refer to the same number. Right? They refer to the same number. And so when I change arg here, so. When I change arg here to be arg times two, right, and return arg. This does not change my original orig, even though these refer to the same number. Because again, this is passed by value. Uh, primitive data types, integers, doubles, chars, all that kinda stuff. Do not, are passed by value, meaning that the value is passed in. But when I change this here, a new block of memory is assigned for this variable. It's not the same block of memory. It's a new block of memory. And so when I return arg, right, Y, I didn't also change orig. It wouldn't be eighty-four eighty-four. Right? Orig didn't also change. It would just be eight forty-two and then the new one eighty-four. Okay.
Uh, Adam?
Yes.
So I've got a question about that one. I'm questioning whether or not, wait, have we decided whether it will compile or not?
Um, I think so. Why not?
I was gonna say that you can't have, we, we've created X copy X is equal to new X copy, but X copy. Like thi- this main function is within the class X copy. Do you see the, the issue with? Like every other time where we've made classes, uh, if we wanna ever test them out, then like look at example B, we have to create a new class. For, uh, for testing it out where we refer to the previous class that we're talking about.
I see your point, but you don't actually have to make a new class. You can put the main method into the original class. It's just formality. It's just like, uh, syntax, oh, not syntax, but it's.
Yeah.
Like common practice or whatever?
Yeah, to put it in another class. In fact, it's even common practice to put it in another file. Right?
Right.
But you can have it in the same thing.
That is legal?
Yeah. That's legal, and we even did that in a lab as well.
But think about it like, think about it like this. This is the definition of a class, just the same way as this is the definition of a class. Right? And we're immediately using public static void, the main method in it. Exactly the same as here, right?
Uh, yeah, I totally get that, but the issue that I'm having with, with, uh, with that is that we're referring to X copy. So like, we're not referring to clock test drive in that example. We're referring to clock, which is a separate class. You see what I mean?
That's true. I see what you mean. Yeah.
And so that's what's, uh, confusing me, but that is a, that, that's okay. Have we, like?
That's okay.
I'll go, I'll, I'll. I, I do kinda wanna try it.
Try it.
Go ahead and try it, yeah.
Yeah, try it out and tell us what the answer is, so.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, if I remembered, uh, it's okay. Like, it's okay.
Yeah, it will comply. Okay, let's move on then, unless there's any questions.
Yeah, and also just to let you know, uh, because main is a static method, uh, you can't actually, uh, access that. In a, in a, uh, in an instance of an object. So, uh, if you create a new object, the main method is not gonna be in there. Uh, because, uh, it's actually a class, uh, it's a class method. So, uh, you have to, uh, go to the class itself, then call the method from there. You don't need to make a new, you don't need to make a new object to access the main. Just get the class and then type dot and then main to call that method. Assuming that is, if you wanna call it. But, uh, yeah, it's a good thing to know about static methods as well. They, they do make a difference, uh. In terms of like the static method and a, uh, and then instance method.
Uh, I just confirmed we are able to, to do that.
Okay, fantastic. There you go. Great. Let's continue. So, um, thank you for checking that, though. Um, so we have class clock, string time. Okay, so class, defining a new class clock. String is gonna be a variable time, or other way around. Variable time is gonna be a string. Um, void set time, take in a string, time is equal to the input. Okay, um, that's fine. You could also say this dot time, but that actually isn't necessary because this was not called time. That was called time, and you'd have to do that, but actually it wasn't called time. So that's fine. You can just forget that. Void get time. No, return, return time. Okay, so, uh, issue, this will not compile.
Oh.
The reason that is, is because, look, we're returning something from a void function. A void function doesn't return anything. So, bad. You could fix this by making this string get time. Right? Because then this time is a string, and so it'd return a string.
Yep.
Again, the issue is that we're trying to return something from a void function. Not returning.
Yep, and, uh, the compiler, uh, know, will notice, will tell you that early on as to code. To make sure you fix the return type. Yep. Let's see some more questions.
Any questions? Any questions from the chat?
Yeah, anybody? I'm gonna check out three, three and eight. Okay. Silence so far.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, and I'm gonna crawl through here. Um, so. Uh, we have another pool thing, obviously. Is this what we just did here? This is the one? Yes. So. Um, we're, we're in chapter four now? Chapter four, yeah. Um. Let's see. Let me just wanna, oh, let's see, what's page eighty-eight to ninety-one? So obviously we have this. Um. The pool thing, but that does take a little bit of time. Let's go through, I wanna just make sure we get all the, the. Syntax one, so maybe I'm gonna skip, we might, we'll still do this one, I think. But not yet.
Not yet.
Let's go to.
Like, we don't have to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'd like to do it. It's a good question. But I'd like to go to chapter five and do the more of the syntax ones, because it also makes us find the output, which is also important.
Yep.
Right?
There are other exercises that do that as well. Okay, so be the JVM, this one's a fun one as well. You'll need, uh, both sides, the output and your code. Uh, so that's like, we are gonna play draw, we're gonna play connect. Basically.
There we go. So we're going to, um, uh, just determine which one of these outputs is the output from this? And do we determine if it compiles too? I mean, it probably compiles, so.
Yeah.
So let's say it compiles, and which one's the output? Okay. Let's take a look. So it's, it's which one's the output? So. Defining the class output, totally fine. Public static void main strings, arms, great. Output O equals new output. O dot go. That's all the code that we have there in our main file. We're declaring a new object O, which is of type output. Allocating space for it, calling the constructor. Do we have a constructor? No. So the constructor just makes the object and assigns nothing. Calling the function O dot go. All this is a complicated way of running this code, to be honest. That's all just a complicated way of doing that. So anyways, from here, uh, int Y equals seven, just declaring a Y equals seven, it's a local variable. Four, for loop, four, int X equals one, X is less than eight, X increment. Y increment. If X is greater than four, print. Increment Y. Plus bracket. Yeah. Increment Y plus, I mean, plus space. If Y is greater than fourteen, print. Space X. Why space X? Oh, space X equals X. I don't know why there's a break there. Why is there a break there? Oh, leave the for loop. The break means leave the for loop. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the break means leave the for, okay. So let's take a look. Let's see which one it is.
Is there supposed to be a bracket after the main?
Um. Uh, yes, I probably just took it out of the screenshot, yeah. I probably just. Let's just check. Uh, yeah, there is. I just didn't, I just included by accident. There, yeah, but good point, that it would be a syntax error if that wasn't there. Um, let's go through it. Let's take a look. So. Y is equal to seven, X is equal to one, Y is equal to eight, X is greater than four, nope. Y is greater than fourteen, nope. Leave back to the start. X is equal to, X is equal to two, Y is equal to nine. Um. Y is equal to nine. X is greater than four, nope. Y is greater than fourteen, nope. To the start. X, this is my, this is my X column. This is my Y column. I'll just put it there. X is equal to, uh, three. This line of code gives me Y is equal to ten. Okay, uh, nope, and nope, again, for these two. To the start. X is equal to four. Y is equal to eleven. Um, nope, and nope, for these ones, last time. X is equal to five. Y is equal to twelve. Okay? Um, after this line of code. This line of code gives me Y is equal to twelve. So now, X is greater than four, yes, that's actually true. Print. Plus plus Y. Plus space. So I can already tell what the answer is. Plus plus Y means increment Y and then put it in. So that means Y is equal to thirteen, and then give a space. That's it. Only one that starts with thirteen.
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's about it.
You can go through the rest and figure out what it, that it's gonna show the rest, but if you're just looking for what's the output, that's the only one that shows. Any questions about how I did that? Okay. There we go. That's that. Um, what was the new thing here? For loop? It was a for loop, I guess, that was.
For loops.
Any questions? Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it, yeah. Questions?
And also increments.
Yeah. Let's continue. So. Next, I have, yeah?
I, I'm gonna ask you, um, like, can you like re-explain like what you did here, just like quickly?
Yeah, of course. So essentially, how I, how I always deal with these questions. Yeah, whenever a for loop, I just like to like make a little table essentially of values, of just like my X and Y value. In this case, X and Y, because those are the two variables here. And I just imagine what those variables are. So it starts as, you know, Y starts at seven, and then we have X is one, right? And then immediately, uh, that turns to eight, X is still one, right? These stop, right? These like, uh, these are false. Right? Um, so they, none of this happens, and we go back to the start. You know, X increments, and Y, Y is still eight, but then Y increments, right, to nine. This, this increments it to nine. These are still false, right? So I go back up to the start, and so I like to make a little like kind of table like this. Of like, what's going on? All the changes. Every time X changes, write both of them. Every time Y changes, write both of them. And then eventually you'll see that at some point that one of the statements will be true. And then. Does that make sense? Or do you want more details about this particular? I just did kind of like a general strategy there, but do you want a more detailed one for this particular question?
Uh, I know that Y turns into thirteen and that's printed out, but how is fifteen and X equals six pointing out?
Cause. Fifteen is like X equals six? Okay, let's continue then, and let's see how that, how that. So we have, um, at this point here, we have X is equal to five, right? At the point, you know, X, Y, dot, 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 dot. We have X is equal to five, Y is equal to, well, now thirteen, right? And now it's thirteen. So that, that's essentially at this point, right there. That's at this point. Thirteen, and then what happens after that? Y is greater than fourteen, not true. So go back to the start, okay? Back to the start, now X is equal to six, right? And Y is still thirteen. That, that, that's happening here. And then immediately after Y is incremented, so we have six and fourteen. And now this line of code runs, right? This line of code runs here. System dot out dot print plus plus Y. Plus plus Y means increment Y, so make Y fifteen. Increment Y and then print it. So fifteen, and then print it. That's how I get my fifteen there. And now that is finishes, that finishes. And then our if statement here, Y is bigger than fourteen, that's true. So print out X equals, right, X equals plus X. So X equals six. Break, code's.
I get that, but like, um, like in the first, like after, like every, like every time it gets iterated, right? Um, shouldn't, shouldn't the first if statement also be, uh, outputting the values every time?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, it does twice, for thirteen and then for fifteen.
Oh, okay, yeah, I get it. So I thought, like, I, I just got confused because there, like, there's three sixes, so I just thought there were like four iterations until now.
Yeah, so I should be, yeah, that, that is true. These are not all iterations. That's an iteration, and that's a whole iteration. Right? Uh, did I do that right, actually? Hold on. Is that correct? Yeah, that's an iteration. Five, thirteen. Oh, I guess that's not a whole iteration, I guess that's. That's the end of an iteration. And then X is equal to, well, yeah, the X changing is what defines an iteration. So there, that, those are separate iterations. Okay, so there we go. That's that question. We go for about fifteen more minutes, guys, so let's, you know, if you have any questions, just, you know. But I, I'd like to do these syntax ones and find the output, so, um. Uh, let's see. Um. One eighteen, one nineteen, so these are just more of these guys. Lots of great questions here. Um. Do we wanna take a look at this one? Oh, these are solutions, nevermind.
Solutions.
Yeah. Uh, one sixty-one is the last one you mentioned, so. One sixty-one.
That is, uh, if the questions, uh, if the question, uh, is okay to work with.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Well, let's see, what's one sixty-one? So it's, it's this one.
One sixty-one is code magnets, but, uh, the thing is, uh. It's, it's not that necessary, but like, uh, there's actually an array list that's actually mentioned, so I was like.
Hmm, array list is good to, is good to talk about, for sure. Uh, let's see, is there more, you know, let's see.
The next chapter is gonna be like, uh, inheritance, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not gonna move on to the next chapter, but. Um, let's see, is there any, what is, the, the textbook is like. Weird.
Huge.
Weirdly laid out, yeah, huge and just like, it's just, I don't really like the layout of everything, but.
Yeah, the shopping your pencil wanted, like, requires you to actually make the project yourself.
Hmm.
Uh, so that you can understand like how to make pseudocode and all that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, let's, you watch that, yeah, sorry?
I said I'd rather do that on that piece.
Yes, of course, I would not rather do it by hand. Um, okay. Then actually, that's pretty much, that's pretty much all the questions. You wanna try? Um. Maybe, I think we should do more find the output. So let's see if I can find a. Questions? Does anybody have a find the output questions that you wanna go through? Anything from lecture or something like that that you wanna talk about?
Yeah. Any, anything from lectures to problem sets you can share with us?
So, just let me know. Figure that together, um. Okay, otherwise, um. I don't have any previous midterms. I don't know. Where they, I can't remember. I thought, I thought I had some, but I can't remember where they are now. So if anybody has them. You can send it over. We can talk about that. Otherwise, I'll just do, I'll just do that last. Pool question. Okay, great. I got some questions. Um. So, let's take a look. At twenty eighteen fall, I guess. at twenty eighteen fall, I guess. See twenty eighteen fall. Uh.
Mm-hmm.
Which of the following four programs that uses operations are equivalent to each of the terms? Okay, that's fine. See the following. Um. Hmm, this one's good with pointing stuff. Is the output. Okay, let's take a look at this one. Let's take a look at this one, although I kinda wanna hide the side of it. Okay, anyways, the, the first prompt is what is the output? I don't even take a picture of that, do I? What is the output of this code? Now, again, I wanna, wanna hide this. Not that it's that important, but it doesn't give away anything. I will, I will talk about this in a second, so. I'll draw the same picture. So, okay, now that we have this here, the question's what is the out, find the output of this? Okay, so let's take a look. Let's see, see what the output is. So, um, private int x. Uh, public class Q, great. Private int x, okay, we've defined a private instance variable. Public Q, a function called Q. Oh, never mind, but this is a constructor, so it's a constructor, because it's the same name as a class. It takes in an integer called xx. Okay, and we assign our instance variable x to that input. That's it. That's all it is. Public void set x, int y, x equals y, because you take in an x value, you set your x value, just a setter method. Void. Public static void main strings arcs, great. Assign, create an array of Q objects named little q. Give it enough space for four Q objects. Great. None of those have been initialized yet. It just has enough space, just an array with enough space for it. For int i equals zero, i less than four, i plus plus. Q i equals new, okay, new. Q of, and remember, the constructor needs an integer. So, you take in i plus one times two. And then we do all this stuff. Q of zero equals Q of three. So, by the way, sorry, this is initializing all of them with some values, whatever. Initializing all of them with some value for its, its instance variable. Q of zero equals Q of three. Q of two equals Q of one. Q of three dot set x equals ten, uh, set x of ten. Which sets the x value. It's a method that's declared. X of, Q of one equals Q of three. For, for loop, print out all of the system dot print. Uh. Sp- string? Oh, just convert to string. It just means convert to string, essentially, converting everything to string. Plus, i plus one, so the next one. So as, as in like, I guess, Q, the corresponding like, one. Plus, Q i dot x, print out all the x values. So to do this, we need to make a little table here, right? We have our Q of zero, Q of one, Q of two, and Q of three. Right? They all point to a space in memory, which has enough space for an int called x. Right? They have enough space for an int called x. You know what? Instead of writing x a bunch of times, just know that this is a box that contains the variable x. Do that by just labeling it up here. Okay, they all have enough space for an integer called x. Okay. So, they all initialize with some values, right? They all initialize with some values. So let's see, what is the zero with one initialized with? Zero plus one times two is two. The first one. Right? The first one is four. One plus one times two is four. Then, after that, we have our second one, which is gonna be two plus one times two, that's gonna be six. And then, uh, three plus one times two is gonna be eight. So, essentially, there we go. That's what it all initialized to, but then all this stuff happens. So, Q of zero equals Q of three. Q of zero equals Q of three. That this is removed. Okay? Uh, does, is it removed? Yeah, it's. Actually, might not be. Doesn't really matter. Nothing points to it. So I guess it's removed, hey? Q of two equals Q of one. Okay? Notice I'm cutting off the connection between Q of two and, and this block now. It's pointing there. Q of three is, the x value is now ten. Okay? Q of one equals Q of three. There. Print everything out. We would get, this is the output. We would get one. What is the first one point to? Ten. Two. What is the second one print to? Uh, point to? Ten. Three. Four. And then four. That's it. Let's see. Oh. Oh, interesting. They yeah, it's, I assume it's right. Uh, because the answer, the answer in the solution is eight, ten, four, ten, but they gotta mark off for the first one. So I'm assuming that I'm right. Okay. So, any questions about this one, how I did this one? I think drawing this diagram is useful. Right? It lets you show what pointer, these are all pointers, is pointing to what block in memory? So, any questions? No? Seemed good? Okay. For B, it says identify any Q objects by their instance, by their x instance variable that are eligible for garbage collection. That's what I was just pointing out here. These guys are, are, um, eligible for garbage collection. Uh, how would you identify that? Identify any Q objects by their x instance? What does that mean? X instance? Oh, what they have. Oh, two and six, two and six. Yeah, okay, there you go, two and six. They mean like, just, but their x values. They're eligible for garbage collection because they never get pointed to anymore. Okay. Um. Let's take a look at this. Here's another, what's the output? So, give it a try. Last question for today, what, just a big what's the output? Let's see. Let's see, let's see, let's see. Okay. It's a long one. So, there we go. What's the output of this code? Let's try to figure it out. Try to put it all in the, all in the same series. Okay. So, class Point, defining a class called Point. Public int x, public int y, public Point, uh, round brackets, int x, int y. This dot x equals x, this dot y equals y. Public void print system out dot print. System out dot print, all that stuff. So what this is doing essentially is instance variable, instance variable constructor, assign the instance variables to what was put into the constructor. Method called print, which will, uh, print out bracket, x comma y bracket, how you write a point. This is like a Cartesian point. Okay. Great, has a thing in. Now, class size. Int width, int height, size, uh, public size constructor, so instance, is, instance variable, instance variable constructor, assign the instance variables to what was put into the constructor. Public void print, okay, system dot out dot print, and now you have size, square brackets, width, height, square bracket. Fine, nothing crazy going on there either. Just putting kind of the same thing as the first one, just now it's square brackets. It's really, it's called size. It's width and height. Rectangle. So, it has, as part of its instance variable, a point called point, and a size called size. Um, but, I just wanna note here, we have not initialized that point and size, lowercase point and size, they are not objects of the class yet. They are just pointer variables which point to an object. There is no object there yet. Right? So if I just draw that thing here, we now have a variable called point and size, which will point to an object of class point and size, but those objects don't exist yet. We've just created these two lines, just create this. Okay? Public rectangle constructor is just taking in two values, assign these things. So you, so you take in a point and a size, and assign it to this. Okay, that's what the constructor does. We have a method called move, which, um, changes the point to whatever we put in. Right? Changes the point to whatever we put. resize takes in a size, and assigns that, changes the size. Print. Prints out the point and prints out the size, right? Based on these methods right there. Printing out a point is done by this, printing out a size is done by that. And now we're in our main method. So what happens is that point p one is now assigned. Uh, that's not actually true. Sorry. Point p one is now assigned a object called point, which has the values, and I'll just put it as the point, as the x and y, one, one. Obviously, this, this is actually written as x equals one, y equals one, but I'm just gonna write as the point, just to be clear. And then we have another object p two, which now points to another point. Okay? With variables two, two. And these ob, these diagrams are really useful for, sort of. Um, then, we have a s one, right? Which points to a block of code. Notice, these still do not have values, right? Points to a block of code, which is a size ten. And just to denote size, I would do square brackets like they do up here. They use square brackets here for size. Then we have s two, which is another pointer to another set of code with another size, right? This size is twenty, twenty. Then we declare a rectangle r. Okay, which, uh, sorry, how I should write that? Declare a rectangle r, which has, which points to a block of memory. A block of memory, which has p one and s one in there. P one, p one and s one in there. Okay, p one, s, these, this p one and this s. Okay. R dot resize s two. Change the size, which is this thing here. So I'm gonna say, this is the size, this is the point. So this is the point. That is the size. Change now the size to s two. Okay, I can do that. S two. There now, okay? Um, r dot print. So, printing it, what does print do? It just prints both of them. Right? So I'm gonna write that here, output. Right? It just prints both of them. So now, printing p one, we're gonna get one, one. On a new line, print ln, we're gonna get the size. Right? Note, note the order. Prints the point first and then the size. S two is twenty, twenty. R dot move to p two. Okay, change the point of r to be now p two. Eraser tool doesn't work for, for some reason, so I better not make mistakes. Um, p two. P two dot x equals two. P two dot x equals two. Okay? P two dot y equals three. Does it have access to this? Yes, it does, because we declared. R dot print will now get us um, two, three, twenty. There's. One, one, twenty, twenty, two, three, twenty, twenty. Yep. Okay, guys, and if there's no more questions, that's it for today, but, uh, I'm sticking around for some more questions if anyone has any. Thank you everybody for joining, for sticking around for the whole thing. The long one. The long one. Appreciate that. Um, if anybody has any questions, let me know. About this question, about any question. Otherwise, good luck. That's our last question for today.
Yep, and, uh, also, I'll be doing consulting, uh, consulting hour in the RSS server, just for those who need it. So I will send the link to the RSS server for you to join, and if you need the consulting, just come find me, and, uh, yeah, I will help you. That's all.
Great, fantastic. That's very nice. Um. Uh, so, Fawn just asked, is our, um, dot resize and dot move methods, do you have it? No, they're not, but they're defined right here. Dot move is right there, dot resize is right there. That's why we're allowed to do this, because rectangle has a dot, uh, dot move and dot resize. Defined right there. It says point p and size s. Uh. What do you mean, point p and size s? Yeah, that, that's taking in, as in like, the, this method here, this method here takes in a point, call it p, assign the point of our rectangle, the point variable of our rectangle, to that input. It's essentially a setter method. It's a setter method for this variable right here. And this is a setter method for this variable right there. Move it to s two, because it said we use r dot resize s two. So, we, this line of code, the rectangle that we just talked about, that we're talking about, r, which we defined right here, set, use the resize method with the point, oh, sorry, with the size, s two. So that means you're gonna take in a size, which is correct, s two is a size. Right? And then assign the size of our rectangle to that input. Which is a object called size. Right? This is from a previous midterm, so. Possibly. Yeah. But yeah, okay. So, any more questions? Of course, let me know. Hope everybody does well. Good luck. Say as much as I can, otherwise, but I'm not very good at answering otherwise, so. Ask me questions. Okay, I'll stop recording.